I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is July 2, 2024. It is 7:00 PM and we are in the municipal meeting room. I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
You first.
Jamel.
Marty Kane.
Jamie Lowery.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I am the chair. We have approval of the agenda, approval of minutes of June 18th, public comment, annual election of officers. Then we have pending business, Brayley subdivision, discussion of the sidewalk. And under new business, we have seasonal RV park and Fitzpatrick development. And then there is other business to be discussed at the end of the meeting. Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Onto the minutes of July, of June 18th.
I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting on June 18th.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie Lowery to approve the minutes of June 18th. Is there any discussion?
I'll need to abstain, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? We have one abstention and five in favor. Motion carries. The next item is public comment. If someone from the public has a comment that they want to bring to the board about an item that is not on the agenda or is not scheduled to be on the agenda in the near future, now would be the time to bring it up. And since everybody's jumping up to come forward, we will move on from public hearing. It is now time for the election of officers. Takes place the first meeting after, after July, after the 1st of July. So we have, how would you guys like to take it? Do you want to do the chair, the vice chair, the secretary, or do you want to go the other way around?
I'm the chair.
Okay.
Thank you, Valo Boy.
If you guys want me to.
Move that Rich Canong continues as chair of the planning board.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion by Jamie, seconded by Susan to appoint Rich Canong as chair. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It is unanimous. I'm going to vote for myself.
Why not?
Hey, listen, if the guys in Washington can do it, so can I. Vice Chair.
Susan, you want it?
Yeah, I'll do it again.
Okay. A motion, a motion that nominate Susan as vice chair.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Jamie Lowery to nominate Susan Roth for vice chair. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Congratulations, Susan.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Secretary.
Hey, Zach's not here, right?
That's right.
It tends to happen that way.
Yeah, that's how I got it.
I nominate Zach as secretary.
Okay. Zach has been nominated for the secretary's position. Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay. Marty has seconded the motion. Are there any other nominations?
Should volunteer for Zach.
Well, if he says no, we can always elect somebody. We can elect Paul again at the next meeting.
Worst case.
Okay. At this point, there are no other nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. That's, that's why you don't get on the board and not show up at a meeting.
That's exactly right.
That's how Paul got here last year.
Yep.
Okay, pending business. The first item up for grabs is Brayley subdivision. It is a preliminary plan. The applicant is proposing a three lot cluster subdivision, five housing units on Old Post Road, tax map 12 lot 6. The parcel is 21.8 acres in the R3 and BI zone. The plan includes one single family home with access from Old Post Road and two duplex lots with a shared private drive. DCB Properties and LLC is the property owner. And Grayden Brayley is the applicant. Paul Gadboy PE is the applicant's engineer. Take it away, Paul. Well, we should discuss the sidewalk. I think we, we, we felt, we got it fairly well covered. I think the biggest issue that, that I had was the site distance that we needed to clarify. Paul did a great job of explaining where, showing us what it is that needs to be done in terms of where the houses were in the driveway. I had nothing.
Yeah. No major issues from me that were, weren't already discussed and acknowledged by, by Paul and Ashley.
Anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Hearing none, then I'll turn it over to Paul and he can make his presentation. If the green light's on, it should be.
No. Okay, thank you. My name's Paul Gadboys. I'm here with Ethan Brayley, who's an applicant for the property. Ethan obviously would like to schedule, approve, get public preliminary plan approval this evening, if that's all possible. I think the checklist I submitted that the, when we called the application complete, met the preliminary plan requirements, except that the waiver for underground utilities, we obviously aren't going to go ahead. But the second most important waiver is, the second waiver is the hydrological assessment. It says that if we're over an acre for, we obviously have to do a hydrological assessment. Then it says the board may require hydrological assessment in other cases. But it says these cases include extensive areas of ourselves. So if your average density is less than one, one unit per 100,000 square feet, our average density is one unit per 90,000 square feet. Doesn't quite, but it says they may require it. So we're hoping we can ask for a waiver. If not, then I have to get somebody on that to actually do the hydrological assessment for the property, which takes time because everybody's busy, right? So that's just something I'd like to see if the board could help me out on.
Okay.
I think everything else I'm pretty much okay with.
Paul, could you explain that again about 100,000 or is it 90?
It says a hydrological assessment prepared by certified geologists or experienced hydraulic when the subdivision is not served by public sewer. Any part of the subdivision is located over standing gravel acreage. And when not, the subdivision has an average density of more than one dwelling unit per 100,000 square feet.
Okay.
So we're at one per 90,000 square feet. These locations of the septics, typically onsite septics, you can go as close to 10, 10 feet from a property line for non, for, for subject, subject, subject systems. Our subject system is going to be 35 feet away, the closest one to the neighboring property. The rest are all 50 to 75 feet away from the property line. So if that helps. So I can.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry if this is really a stupid question, but if it's a duplex, is it still one to one?
One to one as far as setbacks you mean? Sorry.
Well, no, one to one, it's per 100,000.
No, I, they said, what does it say? The average number of dwelling units. So we have five dwelling units.
Okay, so that's.
That's where it comes to be.
90,000, okay.
Besides this, I, I don't, you know, and how close he is to the one per 100,000, I don't have any major heartburn with granting that waiver. They'll have to pass in test fits and which, which they've demonstrated.
And again, I could see if I was 10 feet from a property line, well, I would get a little close. Maybe we shouldn't think about it. Or 35 feet away, minimum setbacks 10.
How many acres of land is being taken up by this, the two duplexes in that, that section?
We're talking to four acres. The rest is open space. So it's 10.5 acres of total area.
Okay. So that's what, 450, 475,000 square feet?
Yeah, I just calculated it.
454.
454.
Okay. I, I don't have any problem with it, except I just worry about setting a precedent. And then what happens is, what happens when the next applicant comes and they have 75 square feet as opposed to 100?
But the ordinance is pretty clear. Because I'm looking, if the subdivision has, has an average density of more than one dwelling unit per 100,000 square feet, it does not. Even if we took all four of the dwelling units together, he's got 450,000 square feet. That's less than one every 100,000. So I don't, I, I see, I think we can waive that particular requirement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just worry about opening the door to other less.
But from a density standpoint like this, if you had a one dwelling unit per a number larger than 200,000 feet where the ordinance, the provision wouldn't, wouldn't really apply and give us the opportunity to request one.
Right. It, it only applies if it's less than
Right.
one per 100,000 and he's over that structure. So I don't really have a problem with it.
Well, I thought you said one, one per nine.
90.
But is. Okay.
Yeah, if you didn't count the house, that'd be awesome.
I forgot, I forgot your house. I was looking at just the duplexes.
So we're, we're one per 90,000 roughly.
One per 90.
I don't think, I'm not sure that, in that case, I'm not sure the ordinance gives us the wiggle though. So the rest of you.
I don't have it in front of me. I thought from what, what he was reading.
Can you read that again, Paul?
Yeah, okay. Require. It says, if it's, if it's not, if it's not served by public sewer, if it's over any part of a standing gravel acreage, which are not, or the subdivision has an average density of more than one dwelling unit per 100,000 square feet. Okay.
Keep reading that. The second fact is the most important.
Yeah, keep, keep going.
One dwelling per 100,000 square feet.
Yeah.
That's why I asked about.
The board may require hydrogeological assessment.
It says may, as.
It's, yeah, it says the, the board may require.
Do you find it?
No. I get the new, it's on page 19 in the subdivision section.
Thank you, Paul. That makes sense.
It also says subdivision has an average density of more than one dwelling unit per 100,000.
Do you have it?
I have it in the subdivision regulation now. It does not say that it has to be done. It seems to leave that up to the board in 7.2 point D, point 23, for those of you that have it. It says a hydrogeological assessment prepared by a certified geologist or registered professional engineer experienced in hydrology, when the subdivision is not served by public sewer and the subdivision has an average density of more than one dwelling unit per 100,000 square feet, the board may require a hydrogeologic assessment in other cases where, where a site consideration or development design indicates greater potential of adverse impacts on groundwater quality. These cases include extensive areas of shallow to bedrock soils or cluster developments in which the average density is less than one dwelling per 100,000 square feet, but the density of the developed portion is in excess of one dwelling per 80,000 square feet. So I think that's where I'm, I'm getting tripped up. And I think it's, if I'm reading this correctly, we could waive it. We don't have to. It's been our practice, standard practice in the past to not waive it, to say that we want the, the study done.
So I have a question that maybe work around. This 100,000 square feet, that, that's the amount of acreage.
Total acres that we are developing.
What about just adding 10,000 square feet to one of the properties and then it would get your.
Well, no, I'm using, I'm using the entire parcel.
The whole piece of the parcel there.
Right.
Some of the average density for the whole entire parcel.
Of course.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe I, I did have another question as far as that goes. That entire property all the way back to Route 1, you're going to retain as open space or could you borrow from some of?
Ethan's buying all the property in the A3 zone. Is the A3 zone line? Marcel Bertrand's retaining the rest of the property in the BI zone.
Okay, all right. So the 100,000 includes right up to that line?
Right up to the A3 zone line, what he's purchasing.
The the other one, I could do this. I do all the house right up next to it.
Yeah.
I couldn't convey, it would essentially be.
You'd have to get 50,000.
There are at least 30,000.
Which is kind of a lot.
Which is kind of a lot. This study is going to cost $2,500.
Yeah, at least.
So for, yeah. So.
Paul, does it help at all to come off of Willow Lane for the house or the number is the number? So I think unfortunately, I think for $2,500, it's the.
I don't think it gives you the.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want to open the door to.
Yeah, no, that we'd have to waive it. I mean, we, we've got the general ability to waive these standards.
Which I think, I, I don't, I don't see any strong reason not to waive it. Except for setting a precedent, but we're within 10% of, of the requirement. And we, we may waive it if we choose to, I think.
This has nothing to do with you, Ben. I think we should probably amend that section to have a minimum percentage or a maximum percentage that it can be less, under the 100.
That's where it's tricky, because the word may.
Right, but you know, maybe we should have a threshold under which we will not go. Right now it's open.
Assessment in other cases. Words may apply to the next paragraph, which says that we may require the assessment in other cases. Doesn't apply.
It lists top part.
The top part is shall.
The, yeah, the top part is pretty much shall. It's, if it, if it falls below that, we may require an assessment based, but in each one of those, it's site-specific rationale as to why.
Right.
You've got your parameters. So if you want to waive it, you've got to have a good reason why.
Yep.
That split right at the, the zone line, is, is that, that's being sold? For the HC or the highway business, B and D?
The BI zone.
Yeah, B and I, yeah. That's being sold or?
Marcel's retaining it because he's going to either convey it to other property owns.
Yeah. And.
Space is going to be conveyed to property owns, opt tech, and enterprise, a technology drive.
We're not able to borrow, keep 10,000 of that?
Yeah, we have to be, to get to our 100,000, we got the red 91 or so now. So that we're going to 203,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And I, in myself, may be okay with that. Like I said, I may be okay with, from myself.
Well, you get a couple of options to consider.
And then, or.
Or just get the study and call it a day and not deal with all the other stuff.
We need a motion on the waiver.
Waive.
Is that a motion?
No. Let's, let's, let's just, let's just take a straight up or down vote and we'll find out whether or not we, we should grant it. Somebody make a motion one way or the other.
There was a motion.
I think I already made one to waive it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I think so. I think, I, I don't know. I don't remember if it was a second, but we got into discussion regardless. So.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if it.
So why don't we, why don't we take, why don't we keep that motion to waive it?
Okay.
Zach, you know.
Okay. Motion by James Lowery, seconded by Marty Kane to waiver, to waive the requirement of the hydrogeologic assessment review. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
It is three. Those opposed? It is 3-3. The motion fails. You're going to have to do the study.
Okay, that's what we need to know. Thank you. Besides that, are we ready to schedule a public hearing and do a preliminary plan approval?
I would, unfortunately, I wouldn't suggest that the study would need.
Get the study first.
Before we do a public hearing.
Yeah.
And the other thing, Paul, we talked about on the sidewalk was that your correspondence with your neighbor.
Yeah.
Yeah. The clearing is probably at that. Would satisfy an email or just a little letter?
Preferably something in writing that we can put in the file.
Yeah.
That'll cover all of it.
Sure.
It's not, I said, we said, you said.
Well, there's a difference.
Oh, just send a letter as it, with, as a PDF and an email. That'll do it. And they'll print it and put it in the files.
So in general, the board thinks the project is a go, just got to satisfy the ordinance.
Well, I think we could, we could declare the application complete because we have everything we need to make a decision. We just need a little more.
We decided, we decided we don't have that.
Right.
We're requiring.
We don't, we don't have that, which means we could deny it, which would still be the, it would still constitute a completed application. That's the problem with the completed application. Just because we don't have everything that is positive does not mean that we, we cannot turn, turn it down. I was going to suggest we deem the application complete pending receipt of. That way we can look at scheduling a public hearing once we get all of the information in without calling them back in to set, set the date.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, at any rate, since I can't make a motion.
So we can, so, so move that we conditionally accept the application as complete upon receipt of the hydrogeologic assessment.
And the letter from the neighbors.
And the letter from the neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Well, then that way.
At, at that time, we'll schedule.
Right.
We need to take a vote on that.
Yes. When, when Ann tells me that that stuff has come in.
Yeah.
I'll tell her to schedule, schedule the hearing and notify the applicant.
Right.
Perfect.
So you don't have to come back in.
On a meeting day.
It will be on a meeting day, yes.
So I'll second that.
I already did.
Oh, well, sorry.
Jamie made the motion to deem the application complete, subject to certain conditions. Tom has seconded that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. As soon, as soon as we get that information, Ann will get in touch with you and let you know when the hearing is going to be.
Good.
Next item, seasonal RV park, a conditional use sketch plan. The applicant is proposing a 114 site seasonal RV park on Portland Road, tax, tax map 29, lot 20 in the DV1 and DV2 zone. The parcel is 39.84 acres with a proposed developed area of 15.5 acres. The property owner is Harvest Moon Hideaway LLC. The applicants are Chad and Jennifer Burnett. Andrew Morrow PE of PH2M is the applicant's engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
I don't remember seeing this when I was looking through the paperwork, so forgive me. But what is a season?
Six months or a second.
From one to one.
Memorial Day, Labor Day.
I, I'm asking because we just actually addressed this with another project.
Right.
Um, because this has become a destination earlier and longer. So I was just curious.
When we come back, we'll, we'll, you know, for a formal application, we'll, we'll have that spelled out for you, what our, what our, what our season will be.
Yeah. Will you be, will you be looking at having it, when you say seasonal? Is that summer season, winter season?
No, summer.
So the Arundel cottages, we approved that for nine months. So they have a nine month window within which their units can be occupied. So it's only January and February, is that right?
January, February, and March.
January, February, and March.
Ken, can we let them do a, sort of give us a synopsis of what they're proposing?
Yep, sorry about that.
It may, I mean, it may answer some of these.
Yep, it might.
Okay.
Please make your presentation.
And Andy's getting paid to sit here, so.
Thank you.
Oh, so we, so we should give him justification for spending your money.
Something, yeah. Andy Morrow, civil engineer with PH2M, the applicant here as well. Chad, Chad Burnett's up here with me. So this is just under a 40 acre parcel, zoned downtown business district in the front. The rear is downtown district, downtown business district two. Parcel has access off of Route 1, Hilltop Drive, as well as Campground Road. Applicant is looking to build 114 seasonal RV sites. The sites, as I've shown them on the sketch plan you guys have, are 50 by 60 in size. Public water will be brought into the site from Route 1 Underground Electric, which will be three phase, will also be brought in from Route 1. I have shown six subsurface wastewater disposal systems spread out throughout the site. Obviously, when we come back to you guys, we'll have those designed and, and test fits completed and all that. But we wanted to show what we're thinking at the time for septic systems. The applicant did meet with planning staff a while ago. One of the items that was brought up was emergency access to the site and a second access, if you will. We have proposed a connection to Hilltop Drive up here on the western portions of the site. That would be an emergency access only. Whether it would have a gate or some kind of system that would only allow emergency vehicles to enter and exit. That way it wouldn't be for the general visitors of the site to use. We, we would want to keep that traffic off of that residential subdivision road. But in case of emergency, we want the ability to be able to do that. Certainly interested in the board's thoughts on that approach, but that was, that was the opinion of planning staff at the time, was that they thought that was an appropriate use and appropriate way to go. So that's the way we've shown it on our sketch.
We think, I think it's a good idea. I would contact the chief and see whether or not he wants a Knox box put up there.
Yep.
And what kind of a barricade he would prefer. And what kind of a barricade he would prefer.
I will be sure to reach out to him uh, prior to coming back to you guys.
It should show on the plans that that is restricted for emergency use only.
Okay.
Andy, what's the nature of that area? Between the two. About in parcels. Is it? Is it an existing right of way easement or you had to acquire?
For this subdivision, this was a right of way that was left as part of that subdivision when it was done.
Yep.
Who owns it at this point? I haven't gone as far to to look down that road, but it was a right of way as part of that subdivision to this parcel. Uh, there are some wet. There are some wet ones in here between here, which obviously we'll have to get permitted to cross that, but. That's a bridge we'll we'll go over when we get to that.
Question also, what's the width of that because of the right of way that's.
For so the 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 right of way through that subdivision is fifty feet wide. I'm showing a twenty. I'm showing a twenty foot access road through the middle of that fifty foot right.
Are the roads going to be? Are they gonna be gravel? Are they gonna be paved? And how wide are they?
I've shown them currently on the site plan is twenty feet.
Okay.
That's one of the big items we wanted to discuss with the board tonight was what their thoughts were on. On those. I mean, as the board knows, a sketch plan is a great opportunity for us as the applicant to introduce the project to you guys, but. You know, we encourage you guys to give us as much feedback as you can before we jump into the design. So if there's anything that jumps out at you, we'd we'd love to hear some direction from the board.
And I already just gave us. Yes, I know you guys just gave us the uh. Pictures here with proposals. Are these gonna be actual RVs or are they gonna be permanent fixtures?
So all all of the structures that are in there will be the park models. That'll be a permanent structure. There'll there'll be no. There'll be no formal RVs coming in and out of the site, you know, on a weekly or monthly basis. They'll all be the park models.
One of the things you definitely need to do then, like Rich said, is when you talk to fire department about the emergency access. You gotta talk to them about these dead ends and whether or not that twenty feet.
Yep.
Because that's really gonna be the deciding factor, I think.
Right. And and well, the other, one of the other factors that the chief is gonna wanna know is where are you gonna put all of the uh, water sources? To to in case something goes wrong. These things will go up like a tinderbox.
Well, they're directly adjacent to one another.
Right. What kind of water resources are going to be available?
Do you know where the closest fire hydrant is? You know, man?
Yeah.
I think uh. Red Apple Bentley's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Near the office park here, near the office park.
It's across street.
Yeah.
Pretty close, yeah.
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 I guess there would be two then, because the other one would be at the at the corner, right? At the corner store, antique USA. I know they have one there, but I don't know if there's another one on the other side of that.
Either way, it's pretty close.
I know there's one on the other side of where and they're usually supposed to be within a thousand feet.
Okay.
So I mean, uh, but I think where the old campground was.
Yeah.
Right there. On the sides next to that.
Yep.
I think there's one there.
Yeah.
Not sure.
Yep, I think you're right. Yep, so not not too far.
We'll be sure to locate those and and show them on the plan when we come back to you guys.
What what kind of water access are you thinking of having for all of these units? Are they? Are they gonna have water in them?
Yeah, we'll call them in.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let the chief know you may be able to. You may be able to hook up a hydrant or something.
Right.
Inside.
No.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So these are. These are gonna be there year round. Permanent resident. Well, are are the buildings gonna be there year round?
Yeah, yeah.
The buildings will be there. People won't be in them during the off season. Yeah.
Well, no, I was more concerned about whether or not they were going to be there year round. Because if they were going to be there year round, they you own them, so you guys will end up getting the tax bill. But if they belong to somebody else. You'd have to collect the information and give it to the town assessor so that she would have that information.
Yes, basically, that's what people, they just buy a migrant lots up.
Yep.
They buy them home and they stay there. They're a little bit of a project.
It's like Red Apple, but.
So, yeah, are you? Are you planning on making these condos at any point in time or?
Year round, day and day or?
No, no, that people are gonna. Uh, don't some of the people at Red Apple, don't they own those slips or pads?
Uh, I don't think they own the land. I don't think they own it.
But but you, so you're gonna own the units in addition to the land that they're on.
So the people buy them, so then they just rent lots off.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
And one more question, um, how, what is the distance between each unit? Or can you walk between them or?
Yes, so so the the boxes that I've shown as the campsites are fifty feet wide, sixty feet deep.
Okay.
So if they're placed in the center, you're looking at. Fifty feet between units, you know, by the time you have the width of the unit, maybe it's.
Yeah, there's a, there's some dimension. Twelve feet wide, so you've got, you know, if it was put in the middle.
That's a lot of math.
Yeah. But actually, that's pretty generous. Yeah.
Uh, you're gonna have what? One parking spot? Uh, yeah, two probably. Most likely we'll try and have two that way if somebody lives in and they have.
Very interesting.
Two two parking spots in the driveway.
Yeah.
Each each one, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great idea.
Sure won't be anybody of schooling in there.
Nope.
No, it's not gonna affect the.
Yeah, or C twenty one. Exactly. That's what that's what we wanted to do something with the property, but we just didn't know what to do that wouldn't impact the school system.
Now, how is that gonna affect body shop?
Uh, I don't believe it's gonna. We're gonna, we, everything's kind of far enough away. Uh, and we got a big fence going across the backside of it, so I think we should be all good on.
I see where you have been parked now.
Yeah.
Big stuff.
That's on the next place next door. What's that?
Food court?
Yeah, we wanna keep the food court, so that's something uh, we were just talking with Andy about. The food court's right in there. And we're thinking of moving the entrance. Over, do away with the entrance for the food court now, move it over to where Andy has the new one going in through. That way it's a little bit further away from Bentley's. Uh, we would just, we're just not above that outside.
And maybe do some parking along this access road to.
Right, yeah.
For the food court.
To help uh, keep the vehicles away from the people that ate and all that sort of stuff, so maybe make some parking over there.
I know there was some discussion or thoughts that you might expand the food court.
Exactly, yeah, or whatever. Yeah, exactly. That a possibility. That's what we would like to do. So that's instead of, so we can put everything where it is now, we have food trucks and parking. We'd like to do away with that entrance, just keep the food trucks in the section. It's all right across from Bentley's. And then I started filling another section, uh, just between the body shop and food court. I started filling that, but uh, again, they told me to stop until I get an engineer plan. They wanted to see like an engineer plan, what's going on there. That's where I would like to have the parking and the road going through for the, you know, for the new part.
Jamel, you had a comment?
You're thinking by pulling some of the parking out of this.
Yeah.
Gonna give you more room.
I'd have room for three or four more trucks, you know, probably three trucks.
Ready set uh, of customers right there.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
Do uh.
Hang on, Jamel has a comment. Yeah, just just press it in the green light.
Thanks. It's my first meeting. I guess, are you considering this like a campground?
More of a resort, we call it. Uh, campground, no, because it's not gonna be people coming and going. It's gonna be just a resort, like uh, they're gonna, these are gonna get set up and stay there, basically.
Okay.
They are still classed by the parties. The bar miles are so attached. I did sell the park in Port Beach. My apartment was called some of the street door. Same concept, not but our most slices into campground will be six months, maybe for a second, thirty first. Little town, just a great concept.
I'm just asking, so I'm trying to figure out like what the use is and what standards will apply, and it seems like a campground to me. Yeah, so I would look at.
Yep.
So I would just. I don't remember the exact language, wh- what item it was, but I think we talked about with Lee J, it was like a. Uh, there's a recreational something in there. I think that was the category we were.
No, I think we'd we'd have to look and see what the classification for Red Apple is, because this is almost identical to what Red Apple does.
But I think it's larger than Red Apple.
Oh, way larger than Red Apple, but the class, the usage is the same.
And.
They own the units, they never leave the property.
Yeah, that's right.
And so this would stay in the sort of the site plan conditional use side of our ordinances.
Correct.
Versus subdivision.
Yep, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was asking. We wouldn't need a subdivision approval at all. We would just need conditional use approval.
Yep.
I was asking because there's specific campground performance standards, so I wasn't sure if you should start looking at those. So we'll have to figure out what use it is, but I would look at them anyway.
I apologize, I didn't get your name, sir. Mike, thank you.
Yeah, so Andy, unless the people start to sell off parcels or lease actual land. You could stay.
I'm looking at the definition for campground. And it says any premise established for overnight use for the purpose of temporary camping. So it's where, I don't know if this is temporary.
That might be.
Yeah.
Again, I think that's why I I suggested Jamel take a look at it and say, what are we classifying Red Apple as?
Right, because it's very similar.
This isn't a seasonal resort, like um, uh, seasonal cottages like Route one. They're not permanent buildings.
No.
Yeah, they are.
Well, they they could.
You left there, but they're they're movable.
Right.
Yeah, they don't have no foundation. You have. Are they anchored down or?
And they have an apron around them, so you don't see the wheels?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, they're not. They're nice looking.
So like the.
Yeah.
When was that Red Apple project approved? Was that a recent approval?
No, they've been there for a very long time.
Seventy years.
But I think. I just, I just referenced them because it's it sounds as if it's going to be a similar usage. We'll have to see what what their classification was.
So are you, if if I rent the space from you?
Yeah.
And I buy a trailer, do I have to buy them from you or from a certain company, or can I bring my own?
We guidelines, because we don't wanna like uh, dispatch these other stuff. There there is two of them. There's an elevation and then crop. Uh, so we'd like to keep them as these part model, like houses, we don't wanna have like uh.
A hodgepodge?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm trying to define.
Right, so we don't care where they get them as long as it's a sappy.
So that's why I'm trying to define what you're looking at here. I can't drive in my motorhome and go back on your lot, even if I sign a one year lease with you.
No, no, we'd like to keep them as just these, this style.
Okay.
Park models.
And.
Instead of like that.
Yep. Do I have to sign a one year lease?
Uh, most likely.
Or can I come in for a weekend?
No, no, we can stop, no, but just keep them as a.
So I think that'll help us define whether this is a campground versus like an RV resort, right? That's.
Yeah, I I don't. I I can't tell right now.
Well, so you would have to look at Bentley's.
Yeah.
Because that is a facility where people drive their trailers and campers in. And stay overnight for a period of time and nothing is.
But is it specifically a camper?
Right. I'm just saying, so we have to see what Red Apple is called. Because it's, this is more like Red Apple than it is Bentley's.
Red Apple is probably, I'm going to say, I believe it's listed as a campground.
It is.
And it's because that was, it was the first one in town.
Right.
Yep.
The corner was Red Apple. It was something else. Uh, a long way where the house was. And then uh, when they bought uh, bought it out, it was tree pine, something of it. Back then. It was a. A gun rod, well, I mean, uh. But back then, they weren't having park models and everything else.
But it it will give us something to look at, to to work toward a determination. And then Jamel can take a look at some stuff and you guys can meet with him and. And come up with a decision of exactly what this is, and then we can say, okay, these are the standards that you're going to have to meet. Yeah, I'm sure. If you met with Lee J, I'm sure he's got some notes floating around someplace.
I'm sure he does, and he's available to.
We can call him up and say, hey, Lee J, where are the notes? Yeah.
Whatever we call it, I think it's a good idea. It's just.
Right, we just have to figure out the standards that we're gonna apply. But in the meantime, I think.
Through the campground standards that Jamel referenced, do those apply to this project? That's what we really.
That's what we need to find out.
Well, if not, you know, a definition definitely has to be created. So maybe because Red Apple is so old and has been there such a long time. It's time to redefine what the kind of uh, project is, and I like the fact that it's not gonna be a hodgepodge. But it is going to be have some kind of aesthetic. Not completely random. No, I'm done. Go for it.
Just looking at, you know, first first line of the two divisions between campground and. A recreational, a commercial recreational facility. Based on the examples given for the commercial recreational facility, I think it would have to fit more into the campground.
Well, I think the the, if if I remember correctly, in our discussion with the commercial recreational facility. We were talking about it because there was a place that was going in down on the corner of Route one that was going to be.
Yeah, the tennis, um.
But the examples they give, miniature golf, tennis court, indoor sports, ice rinks, amusement parks, things.
Disco.
That nature that aren't necessarily, you know, have a residential component to it.
The disco, of course.
Yeah.
If they ever get open, so I can go play.
They're working on it. They're working. I saw Ted, he's working on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. One of Andy's questions was on the road with. I mean, to me, I think that would, that would be. You know, a a big conversation with the fire chief. They haven't already had that.
We have not, but we'll certainly do that.
I don't know if he's going to think that twenty feet is enough, because he's not gonna be able to get two vehicles.
No.
Going through there.
Yeah.
We got, we got people pick up trucks. I mean, uh.
But again, that's, you know, there there's the this, what classification is it? If it's a campground, twenty feet is a standard that.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably pretty wide for a campground.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's pretty generous.
Right.
I do too, it. And and it's not like.
Those campground roads are one way, right? You know, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which raises the question.
Could do here.
Okay, yeah, that was gonna be the, that that raises the question. Are these one way? Except for the blind end.
Intent was for them to be two ways as we sketched them onto this plan, but.
Yep.
We haven't really worked through those details yet. They certainly could be one way.
It'll be tough for the dead ones.
Well, but the thing is, when you speak to the fire chief, he's gonna give you a lot of insight.
Yes.
Into what's gonna be best for them to maneuver their trucks in one way actually may be better for some reasons as opposed. The two ways, but they'll they'll let you know. Yeah.
So what, do you know uh, what the density of development is to the lot?
So at, what I've sketched on here is about sixteen acres of area of the forty acres.
Oh, so that that's.
Yeah, it's a little less than half the parcel that is being developed.
Good.
Are you considering any opportunity? Fire hydrants inside the. Inside.
We could, but yeah. We could, but yeah. That's everything. I finish your.
Right, I uh because you don't have from water source. I mean, this is also a part of the fire department and everything else.
I think I think that's a great point, Marty, that we should ask the fire chief what he would want, because if we need a fire hydrant internally, we'll have to run a bigger line into that.
Well, you.
To build a service.
Yeah, I know.
An eight inch anyway, I mean, uh, for all the volume they have.
What else do they?
Yeah.
Anyway, it's.
We might, yeah.
And.
Well, you might want to open up the entrance. Cause being an RV park, the water gets turned off with it. So if we had a hydrant at the entrance, you could shut it off at the entrance and then have the park drive the hydrant.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah, that's.
Cause these are RVs, they're not going to be used.
Yeah.
Every uh the water being or four B P going in.
So there'd be no sprinkler systems inside or no, no need for any water.
Right, yeah, exactly. But maybe we can run the water main for us.
There, depending on where it is.
Cause that's why I did mine car.
Yeah.
Hydro down the entrance.
Yeah.
First out, shut it off.
Good.
So what else do you guys need from us? Um, other than. Uh, it's creative, interesting.
Yeah, so any, you guys have any thoughts on the layout or any any concerns with um? You know, the way we've, you know, again, this is a sketch plan, we've just.
Personally, I think the fire chief and his suggestions are going to really drive what you do, so. I think it would be um unnecessary to really discuss the. The layout until you really speak to him and let him hear what he has to say.
We just kind of want to get an idea.
I mean, you got traffic, of course, that will be in consideration as we get into things.
Uh, yes.
Who's there?
Yeah, Marty.
Anything about traffic?
Well, that they they're going to have to have a traffic study done. Because we're talking, you put a hundred and fourteen units in there, you're going to add quite a bit. Uh. You may want to talk to DOT. They'll probably suggest that you end up talking with Warren Bentley across the street because between the two of you. You're going to have a whole bunch of traffic pulling out onto Route one.
So it's kind of like where my, where the trucks are now. Is in between these two pathways and thinking of just kind of keeping everything separate so it's not so.
Yep.
As you may have, we move the motorcycle still a bit, you know.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, you you've got your.
Yeah, we appreciate your input this evening. It was very helpful, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, great idea.
One of those points, you're gonna have a golf course, uh, golf arc, uh. You know, around the.
Have a like little golf action, whatever.
Yeah, because when you got the clubhouse. I mean, uh, if you're a unit twenty seven or fifty two, you are going to be able to necessarily run. Up to the clubhouse.
Yep.
I mean, uh, and because there's no, 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 and since the parking under there. I mean, uh, yeah. It's just a thought, I mean, uh. We get seniors and somebody else running around.
Yeah, this way it is from the back to the.
That's why I'm going out with the.
Okay.
Okay, I do have one other question.
One other question.
Uh. I'm seeing the large weapons on both sides of the property.
Yes.
What's, I don't, you know, not knowing that. Don't go really well out there. Any, any chance that? That is, they are both part of a larger complex? That would, that would then trigger other setbacks and things like that?
This one certainly could be part of of some wetlands on this piece over here.
Yeah.
This one's kind of dissected by this subdivision in the back and campground road. I don't think this one's part of a.
Okay.
Larger complex. This one certainly could be.
Oh, point of interest, this is where the town was uh thinking of putting in. That property was where the town was wanting to put in the uh.
Yeah.
What what is it called like?
Village Center, was it?
Village Center.
No, I thought that was, I thought that was across the street.
No, it was right there.
That's this. That's this property.
It has no relevance.
Well, good luck with this.
Yeah. Uh.
We'll see.
At at some point, we'll end up having to do a sidewalk. You know, but we'll wait until after we get through the preliminary sketch.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
Right.
We recognize you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Item number two.
And it is very to see you again.
Item number two, Fitzpatrick Development.
Hey, you know, new opportunities and.
Hey, thanks of all.
Yeah.
So we, we're looking.
Nice to meet you and.
We're looking at Fitzpatrick Development Site Plan Amendment and Conditional Use Application. He's proposing to him an amendment to his previously approved site plan eliminating the seven campsites. The conditional use application is for a ten thousand square foot commercial indoor recreation facility and associated parking. The parcel is located in the ARD zone on tax map for lot twenty three. Ben Fitzpatrick is the applicant. Christopher Taylor P E is the applicant's engineer. And this is going to be, this is the building that you were, that you were permit, you've got got a permit to construct. And you now want to turn it into like a recreational facility?
Yes, uh, the gentleman behind me, um, running Fitz right now, primarily lacrosse, but they're going to be bringing a turf field that's going to serve as.
Okay, but it's it's all going to be inside the building.
Inside building.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, so the um, this project was previously in front of the board about a year ago at this time. Uh, at which point uh the site received approval for the two buildings that are are shown on the plan here. Uh, the forty eight hundred square foot building uh is remaining unchanged. Um, the ten thousand square foot building is staying the same size in the same location. Changing the use of of what the building was. It was a warehouse um storage for RVs and boats previously. Uh, but now it's going to be an indoor recreational facility uh with a turf field inside of it. Um, the campground, uh, the site previously got a conditional approval for campground use. That's kind of been taken off of the site plans um to make space for some additional parking. It's going to be associated with the uh recreational facility. Uh, overall, the impervious area has been reduced, uh, but we're keeping the stormwater facilities the same size. Impervious area has been slightly reduced, so got a little bit more wiggle room within those stormwater facilities. Um, we did submit a traffic study uh with the with the application. Um, with this type of use, the the traffic is increasing. Um, did traffic counts on Route one eleven um and kind of did an analysis. Uh, of what the proposed traffic will be. That it also includes the development for the paving business that was previously approved on this lot down here. Um, so those numbers are included in that traffic study and that's included in the application you can take a look at. Um, the results in eighty eight peak hour trips on Saturday for the both uses. Um, and then sixty nine peak hours, uh, peak hour trips in the PM peak hour. Um, in the the AM peak hour is pretty low, uh, because the facility won't be, the recreational facility won't be open in the morning. Um, to contribute towards those peak hour AM trips. Um. We looked at um. Intersection site distance at the driveway that was previously already approved and meets the town of Arundles uh site distance requirements. Uh, we made an application to main DOT for an entrance permit. Um, we are under the, the application is under the hundred peak hour trip threshold that. Requires a traffic movement permit with the DOT, so we, but we have submitted that entrance permit. Um, so they're looking at it. The other thing to note is that Route one eleven, um, this stretch of it was just restripped with a.
Mm hmm.
Uh, two way left turn lane, so that will actually help in uh with the facility. You'll note in the, or it's a note in the traffic study. Um. The analysis is kind of done uh for the level of service before that striping occurred. Um, so we were still using the two two lanes in the uh westbound and um one lane in the eastbound direction. So um that that two way left turn lane is only going to be a benefit from here.
Now, did did I understand you correctly? This is not going to be operational late in the afternoon?
No, it's going to be operational in the morning.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Yeah.
Late in the afternoon, good luck making a left hand turn.
Yeah.
I have that.
It backs up from, I I saw it two weeks ago backed up from the lights on Hill Road all the way to to uh. What's that thing in benefit? Backwood Market Basket is.
It's.
All the way back.
Conveniently located, a lot of people will be heading to the turnpike.
Yeah.
I don't think you will see a lot of left hand turner. And our insurance is also wide enough if we needed to create a lot, a right of left leaving. Um, we've always talked about that if we do have larger traffic flows with future business, we've always kept that entrance as big as we could in case we. But yes, it's a busy road.
Very good. I just want to make sure I understood. You you're saying it's only going to be open in the morning?
No, no, it's not open in the morning.
All right.
Yeah.
Right.
Open, it primarily.
All the kids have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's uh definitely focused for the afternoon and the Saturdays.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense to me.
And sort of thinking on on traffic, uh, given how close this is to the DOT threshold. Um, and depending on what DOT comes back with, I I would. I would suggest we have the traffic study peer review.
Okay.
We normally would do that with stormwater or things like that, but given this stretch of one eleven, the amount of traffic, I think it would.
Okay.
It would prove us to do that.
I think Dan has a list of the consultants that we use for peer review, Jamel.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
You also do peer review for stormwater as well?
Yes.
Okay.
But we've, we've already looked at this for stormwater.
In the past.
Oh, yeah, we've, we've, we've seen, this is the third time, I think that we've seen this.
Technically, yeah.
Cause this. Probably was through stormwater review with.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it it's got a, a slow to permit with DP, so DP already reviewed this, the.
So so we, we likely defer to the DEP's.
Yeah.
Uh, review of that instead of doing a peer review.
That makes sense.
For stormwater.
Thanks.
Does the entrance signage remain the same pretty much as what you were going to have for the campground?
Yeah, we haven't gone down.
Yeah.
Sign out who yet there.
Yeah, we are requesting a waiver uh that was previously in the the previous application about submitting a sign information. Uh, really just haven't gotten into it yet of the specifics. There's going to be a number of businesses here uh and trying to. You know, get a sign that um, you know, advertises for for all of us, we're being coordinated that, I guess. So that is uh one of the waivers that is being requested is the submission of a schematic sign. Um. The other waiver that we are requesting is uh for the reduction of the required number of parking spaces. Uh, there's a large required uh for an indoor or commercial recreational complex. Uh, I'm assuming that that was based off of like a gym facility. Uh, Planet Fitness, something like that. This type of use um has a little bit less demand than than that typically does. Uh, so under the calculation, which is is shown on the site plan. Uh, a hundred and twelve would be required. We're providing eighty five parking spaces. Um, we actually have um. Forty six paved parking spaces. You can see kind of around here, all these paved parking spaces are tended to be the primary. Parking spots for uh the indoor recreational facility. There's some additional parking spaces um. For the smaller building adjacent to it, and then we've got a gravel parking lot down here. That's kind of the overflow that would be used. Less often or whenever there's turnover or something like that, so.
Question, will there be any spectator events where it might be people coming to just. For watch, watch an event?
I'll I'll kind of defer, but the uh and I might these guys talk about a little bit more, but uh the size of the field itself is not a full size field. Uh, it's it's smaller, it's it's more the size of um. Like a tennis court with the extra boundaries on it and stuff like that. Um, so it's it's not a full field where you could be doing multiple games at a time or even a a regulation game, but uh, yeah, if you want to speak to.
Yeah, Chris, Chris. We're not planning on any terms, uh, I think. Just because of the space and not a lane for.
So so we won't be have, not planning on having like two hundred people watching a game or.
Yeah, so the the only spectators, yeah, I mean, it's mostly practices um or, you know, inner squad game type of things.
Yeah.
Um, and where you may have some parents that are that are saying to watch um that are already there to kind of uh drop off kids and that sort of thing.
Thanks.
Uh, quick question. So the gravel area, that's the parking area. So you weren't using that originally for the campground where you were? Is that where you were going to have your fire pits and? So does, does that affect the abutters in any way? Cause uh are you closer, further away, less intrusive?
This was, the the campground was in this area, kind of came off the end of the road and moved back up through here. So it was all of this area. Um, that was a campground. So I think we're pulling it further from the stormwater management, further away from the uh the neighbors.
I imagine your abutters are going to be happy with that.
Yeah, I would think this would be.
Yeah.
Something. That's that's been kind of my goal from the start as I'm looking for businesses to either start or bring up properties. What's going to work well. It's a, it's a unique zone, certainly with the road and the mixed use zone, so. Uh, I thought this was a a perfect business to be to be coming in here, really. Um, especially if this is going to be the business that takes out most of my traffic, well, then uh I'm just, you know, confident with that. But yeah, I think the neighbors would be much happier to know. Um, and I did, thinking about traffic and having that peer review, um, right now I'm still the one doing all the clowning while going down there. And I will say that after five, yeah, so a lot of these guys are going to be getting out of later things. After five thirty, six o'clock, it's really quite easy to find gaps.
Yeah, it's it's more like from five thirty to five fifteen or four thirty to five fifteen.
Yeah, I think they're gonna probably, I. Wouldn't give us to be pulling into the property and arriving, I think that they're out.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, it is.
I mean, we, we're going to have everything you can do in long, like an hour long, two hours long, so it's not going to be like fifty minutes. You know, if people are telling us about it too long or. I'm hearing.
You're gonna, then you're gonna have a big slug at that point.
Uh, I get it. Right.
So now, if I understood you correctly, you said there were, there were a number of waivers that you could request it. I only see one in the application.
There's a, there's two waivers being requested, one for the the submission of this. Sign schematic and then the other one is to reduce the number of parking spaces being required. Uh, that's um at least spelled out in the cover letter. I don't know if we, if it, if there's a waiver form that we might have missed or something, but. Uh, for the checklist.
I I'm not sure. The only one I saw was the schematic uh on the signs.
No, they have something.
On the second page of the.
Yeah, I hear.
Cover letter.
It's on the cover letter, okay. Yeah, I just went straight to the list of waivers and said, oh wait, I don't see it.
Um, so we're, so may just uh quickly, you sign if we did waive it, which we have to decide. Whether we will, but you still have to have that approved. You have to present something for the permit uh. whether we will, but you still have to have that approved, you have to present something for the permit, uh, just to, to install it.
Yeah.
Just kind of planning on handling that process.
Yeah.
I think Chris said that I would be able to, to do that, and if we've gone in, as you know, a few different directions with the property, so it's been one of those. Um, if I'm able to do it later, let me do it later.
Yeah.
I guess we could, we'd also be, you know, amenable to a condition of approval too, or something like that, where, where, what's the sign go, before the sign goes in, you gotta come back to.
It's reasonable. Good.
What's your timeframe?
Um, I hope, so, we started construction on buildings under our, our, we're foreign foundations under our original use, um, so we plan to have the buildings erected um, within the next three weeks, and then, uh, once you guys have given your approvals, that's when, um, those inside sports will, will start, and I know they wanna be open, uh, for this fall.
Mm-hmm.
I do believe.
Now, are you leaving your end wall, thinking that in case you have that on you, make the building longer? You know, you know, I know that.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I fully understand, leaving the end wall.
The end wall on your buildings, in case you're, you say if you have dicks put an addition on, so that in case you needed it longer, I mean, when it is, the proposal is so that in case you have to come back and be able to add on in addition to what, I mean, uh.
We certainly have the room to do that. The entrance door is on the side that would be.
Lengthwise.
Chris speak to.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, yeah, these buildings are, that can be like expanded pretty easily.
Right.
Uh.
I have anybody.
Yeah.
So I know what I'm talking about, but we have to, we put the end wall on. So if you wanted to go another forty feet or whatever else, now you can't, I mean, without having a deadhead front. You don't have to do that.
Yeah, yeah, we've, um, and that's why we, we like these buildings, cause they're always easy to add on to, um, but we're yeah, we have been had that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, but, yeah, no, and there is another wetland to the left, so really the only expandable one would be this gable end spacing into the property, uh, and that is where there may be six-foot entrance stories, but absolutely, that's, that would be the only expandable, cause even the smaller building, I think, is right in the corner of setbacks with the road and the sides.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, that, this gable end wall would be the only.
Now, this group, which you have across, is it mostly high school? And are you working with this, uh, different? Group, different?
Yes, but right now, so we, we run across the position, but primarily, uh, in there already that has shown interest is Billaki Group, Training Group, Flank Hall Building, and, uh, Sartor, so. So far, I've been all across from you to, to high school, actually, you can come and sleep.
Yeah, but I didn't know you were working like with the veteran or the thorn.
All, all of you. Yep, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm like teasing.
Have you, uh, had any coordination with D P, with having to go through, is there an amendment or a minor revision or anything?
Yeah, so we're gonna apply for a minor revision, uh, with this being a reduction in previous area of the building, it's gonna stay in the same location. Uh, we, we didn't, with the, what we're planning on doing basically is, uh, getting construction uh, to a point where uh, doing kind of the, the common elements, the stormwater infrastructure, uh, getting the building foundation in, uh, then going to D P, they don't really like to see, uh, construction going on, or you got an open application, so trying to get that kind of set into a place, and then letting them know, and then, you know, the, the building erection can kind of be going on without the site working.
Yeah. No, that makes sense, I was just curious. I figured it would be a, a minor revision, but it's more to understand the timing of.
So, go ahead, Paul. You guys are changing use of the building. I, I don't know if before, I can't remember, we had talked about, are you guys sprinkling the building? I mean, you're not gonna have a lot of people in there versus trucks, tractors, equipment, right?
Yeah, we are over at the size threshold, and so, uh, both, both uses require sprinkling.
It's a question for you on, let, let's discuss the waivers that they've asked for. The, the.
I would, we'd make a motion on one of them.
Oh, we can, but I think we should discuss what they are.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the first one I'm looking at is a waiver of the plenary site plan review provisions for having a schematic elevation of pro- proposed signage. The design of the an- anticipated sign for the site has not been finalized. I don't see how we can waive anything if we, if it, if it hasn't been finalized, we don't know what it is that they're looking to put out. I think if, if you're gonna ask us to waive it, you should tell us, this is what the sign's going to look like. You know, and, and that would be the, the, we could, it would give us a better idea in terms of looking at, saying, do we wanna waive that requirement, or should we make you stick to the details that are in there? And the second one is the parking, and I feel kind of the same way. You're, you're asking us to the parking requirement is typical for larger gym, gym fitness centers, and it's not appropriate for this type of use. We anticipate the proposed surface parking is adequate to meet the demands the site may experience, but you haven't told us what you'd like us to lower it to. You're telling us that it's, you don't need all of that space, it's too much. But the ordinance requires a hundred spaces on that ten thousand square foot building. What do you think it should be set at?
Well, we, I guess we're, we're proposing eighty-five, so that was our, uh, request on the, on the waiver there.
Oh, okay, cause I, again, I, I didn't see it in here.
Yep, that's true. We, I guess it's not, um, specifically settled out of what uh, be reduced to, but we are showing eighty-five parking spaces on the site. Uh, which we think that's adequate. And then on the, uh, the sign waiver request, I guess that's a little misworded. Um, I guess the more, maybe more appropriate action would be to, uh, condition the approval, uh, and to kind of defer the sign uh, until that's, until it's actually proposed to be installed. Cause right now, we're not really proposing a sign, um, so.
Okay.
If we wanna, I guess that was really the waiver, cause we're not proposing a sign. So, we don't have anything to propose, so that's.
Yeah, if, if, if you're not proposing a sign, then I think that's acceptable, but do we just leave it blank and say, you know, let the codes enforcement officer deal with it when it comes time to put a sign in?
Well, it'll come back to us with amended site plan that shows a sign with the
Yeah.
With the.
You know what?
Um, so from, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the parking, because I think it would be important for us to understand if there is an alternative parking standard that is, is, uh, published, you know, researched and published by parking and traffic people that, um, you would base the eighty-five spaces on versus what we have in the ordinance.
Uh, so we looked at this really as a, as a custom use and not the, the standard for that of what the anticipated program's gonna be. Um, and the number of, uh, people that can be in the facility and, and given kind of size it for, assuming that, you know, one group of people's in there. The next team or per group of people arrives to the site, so it's kind of been, uh, designed with both like a double occupancy of what the, what's expected to be there. Uh, plus the, the, the parking for, for this, uh, the other building as well.
Was any of that outlined in the traffic?
Um.
I didn't see anything right off. What I, where I'm getting that is if it, if it's not could you prepare, like, what I'm thinking, the vendome to the traffic study that would document the the, your, uh, logic with the reduction in parking?
Yeah, we definitely.
You know, right now, in the absence of any information, it would be hard for us to say as a board, yeah, we're willing to, you know, essentially go down the, about, about seventy-five percent of what the requirement is with no with no real justification other than what we think is gonna work.
I think that's a, a good point, cause I, I'm looking at it more from the point of view, no disrespect to, to you guys, or what happens if they fail and go away, and we've said you can reduce the, the number of parking spaces for the building? We now have to come back and say, oh, no, I'm sorry, raise it up again.
Well, but we can make that as a condition of approval, that if, if there is a change of use or, you know, uh, that, that they would be substituted to, uh, coming back through to the planning board to get a, an amended site plan approval.
That's, that's true. I, I was just thinking that it would be easier to say, well, no, it's, it's the hundred spaces. Then you don't have to come back and make any changes, but it, it can go either way.
I believe we covered the hundred spaces when you include the gravel, so there would be that.
No.
Is that correct?
No.
But those.
So, and, and hear me, I mean, I'm dealt with a ton of shopping centers that you've got, you know, forty percent of it is unused. You know, ninety-five percent of the time, and that's unfortunate. So, so.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, if you picture a ten thousand, and just to put it in length terms, if you picture a ten thousand square foot gym or recreational facility, you're thinking, that's a lot of people you can cram in a gym. But when you have, talk about, like Chris was saying, a very specific situation, there is only one field, it's not multiple fields, it's not multiple teams. Um, and that's, as these guys are saying, you only have one season in that time, so there is a limited set number of people. It is a large building, but we're not cramming it full of people.
And, and that's what I'm, I'm saying, is we just need that.
There, yeah, there's, it kind of talks about it, um, in the traffic study of how they get to, uh, the traffic counts coming from there, but it's not necessarily, uh, formed in a frame, or framework that towards parking spaces, so we can kind of pull that information out and provide a little write-up on
Yeah.
Why, how we came up with the number.
Like that, they're just documenting, uh, whatever decision we make, we have something to.
Clarify the waves.
And I, I, I will add, I'm thinking it, it if there is overflow, need for overflow parking, it's only gonna affect, affect your property. It's not gonna spill over into the streets and the neighbors, so it really, the, the main reason for parking is so that people aren't out in the streets, yeah, uh, blocking traffic. I don't, I think people just park in the grass and.
Why don't you quantify the overflow parking in terms of how many additional spaces that would give you if it was necessary to use the gravel area for parking? So, did you say specifically? I don't recall.
I mean, it, it's marked on the plan, I don't think we call it out in the, in the report specifically, but we've got, uh,
Thirty-eight.
Looks like quite a few.
Thirty-four, kind of in the gravel area. So those really aren't intended, but if you have the, the turnover at, just hit at the right time or something like that, and there's two large or, and everyone's driving themselves and possibly. Uh, the other thing I would say is that there is room on the site to add more parking if, uh, you know, if it, it was needed, so it's not a, a space issue, it's just really not wanting to put that in a previous area, and if we don't think it's gonna be needed. Uh, so, if, you know, if, if you wanna condition it where it becomes an issue or something like that, um, that's gotta be put in, if, if parking becomes an issue, then that's, that's more than adequate there, acceptable to us, so.
Well, you, you, I think, I mean, I'm sympathetic to not wanting to add any, you know, more parking than you need to do. But just provide us something that we can, we can refer back to as, you know, so we go techniques and their professional engineers assess this. You know, in concert with what the anticipated use is, and, you know, here we go, and our professional judgment, you know, we think eighty-some is, you know, is appropriate versus a hundred and some, whatever the numbers were. Uh, and then, uh, you know, we would, I would be in favor of putting the conditional approval, that if anything were to change in the use. I, you find out that, you know, in five years, you wanna fill it up with, you know, treadmills.
Yeah.
Then, you know, we would, we would have that ability to come back through and reassess it.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we certainly do, like Chris said, after space.
Yeah, I like that.
Uh, yeah.
Jamel?
Wanna also note that the ordinance requires parking to be paved. Um, so I don't know if you guys wanna rethink the gravel. Um, but that's a requirement for all parking.
So that gravel.
There was provision for.
One gravel lot, you're saying.
Overflow or.
Yeah, I think there, didn't we discuss that for on another project, that it can be gravel or reclaimed?
We, we discussed that on, uh, the disc golf.
Do we?
Place, yeah.
Did we have a, um, ordinance change on that?
Yeah.
I'm reading five twelve point two, just says all parking areas serving fifteen or more shall be paved. Or an equivalent surface, I guess.
Or equivalent, that's where we're gonna about.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, just, just gravel may not cut it by some
reclaim.
Reclaim.
Yeah.
Well, if, if you continue to read down on five, five twelve two. Uh, over gravel base of at least twelve inches in thickness there. Two inches of bituminous concrete surface may be substituted with a minimum of two inches crushed gravel. Reclaimed bituminous pavement or similar stable surfer, surface material if a case can be made that the bituminous concrete is not warranted.
We, okay. Rule that type of thing, you did to your assessment.
Just a little more detail, yeah.
Yeah, give, give us an assessment as to why it does not have to be paved. Great.
I'll ask some question. And, was there all this greedy stuff going on? Are you gonna be putting in an electric charging station anywhere?
Um, that's actually a conversation I did have, um, especially when we were still an RV park. Um, we talked about having some charging stations, that has kind of gone away, um.
I mean, with all these.
I know, it's.
And finding the what, I mean, uh, that's why I'm asking that.
From a money perspective, I, I definitely looked into how much money can I have put up, put some charge things, but from a chat.
I'm saying, I was once, I mean, that's, uh, you can, one thing all dead.
Yeah.
There.
They burn up, Marty, they explode, they implode, and that's it, the whole place goes up.
Yeah, I, um, right now. But we, we're already.
Candles only.
We have enough going on that I didn't need to add to Christmas.
So, next steps.
Next step, uh, normally we would say, because it's a, uh, a, a change of, uh, condition on use permit that we would do a sidewalk, but I see no reason to do a sidewalk.
It's.
We've been out there.
Multiple times.
Prevented and once for the, for the, uh, landscaping guy.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to go walk the site again.
I'm, I'm making motion, we waived the sidewalk, do we?
Motion was made by Paul Green and seconded by Susan Roth to waive the sidewalk. Discussion, Tom?
Um, F, uh, no, not in that.
Okay. Is there, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing then, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, take it away, Tom.
Um, I just forget, did we deem this complete?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. That's the next step.
That is the next step. And from there, we have to go to a public hearing. So, because it is a change of use, we need to notify everybody and all the abutters. We can do, if, if we determine that it, it is complete tonight, we could do that at the next meeting.
So I move that we find the application complete. And based upon.
We, we'll vote on that, and then we'll vote on.
Okay.
Uh, the public hearing.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Who's second? Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to determine the application complete. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Do we have to include the conditions of these waivers? What we just said, they had to go clarify them and all that, is that part of the motion?
No, we can determine that it's complete.
That's why I didn't add the waivers.
And they can, they can bring in all of the waiver information, when, when we do the final, which will be.
Well, we, it's far as, on, on that talk, if they, they don't have a sign, uh, I understand, that one, that's fine, but there's a lot of questions on the parking, and they had to go back and get clarification for the waiver, so I didn't know if they had to include that as part of the condition of being complete. Yeah, no, they, I think they have enough that we can deal with that.
Okay.
But the sign, so the sign is, it needs to be something submitted. Yes or no? We have to waive that as well. Do we, do we waive the signs?
No, they're not even going to propose a sign.
Okay.
So it's not even a non-issue.
Okay, good.
Always, always remember that in the, on a, uh, a motion of completeness, it doesn't mean that we're approving it, it's simply saying we have all the information we need.
Right, that's why that's enough, the sign, it gets required, we need it, if, if it's going to be a sign.
And, and I think this is very different than the hydrogeologic segment we talked about in the previous one, that depending on what these guys, you know, business is in their traffic department, we could have this back, you know, that, that addendum on the, the parking within a few days, if, you know.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
So do I need to take that motion again, or?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of deeming the application complete?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It is complete. Now we can work on.
Scheduling the.
Scheduling a public hearing.
Next meeting? We'll, we'll take a long turn over the.
I, I think we're here with that.
Okay, um, I'll propose with the next meeting, which would be
The sixteenth.
Sixteenth of July.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, to hold a public hearing on the sixteenth of July.
I'm not voting, but can I point something out?
Okay.
Uh, I, is that enough time for you all to? Well, we have to figure out the peer review of the traffic study.
Right.
So I don't know if they'll be able to turn it around by the sixteenth.
Well, if, if, if it hasn't been completed by that point, we just won't have the fight. We can have the public hearing, we just don't have to have a vote for forty-five days after the public hearing.
Okay.
So at least we can get, move forward from there, where we can get all of your neighbors uh, to show up and go, hey, we got a problem.
Go for the sixteenth and.
Or we can go for August.
Yeah, or you could delay a meeting and go for August.
Um, I don't even know all the implications of a peer review. Right, is that you guys are a hundred percent that that needs to happen after the discussion we've had since then? Um, I, I do feel like if there was an issue there, um, the DOT would tell us, but I guess.
Peer review for the traffic?
Yeah. If, if you guys are really a hundred percent on that, I, uh.
On, on that, I am kind of a hundred percent, that's.
Cause I mean, you know, I know the, DOT is going to look at this, but the difference between a traffic movement permit and entrance permit is pretty significant. And so I would, I would be more comfortable with, you know, and where, where, where we are, or where you guys are, proposed trip generation, uh, is, is starting to approach that threshold, so.
So, if we can, we can do it for the six.
Get it together.
We can do it for the sixteenth, or if you want, we can push it to the first meeting in August.
If it's going to be in traffic.
Okay, yeah, you know better.
I, yeah, I guess we'd request to push it back to the, the meeting at the, not the next meeting, but the following.
That would be August sixth. Hiroshima Day.
Yeah. So we should be able to have completion that.
Okay.
Great.
So, uh.
I moved that we.
Amend the motion.
Okay, so I will change my amendment to, amend it to, uh.
August sixth.
August sixth instead of the, the July.
For the public hearing, I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? So we actually have two votes. We have to vote on the amendment to change the date, and then we have to vote on the motion to have the hearing.
But to change the date was never approved. Did we vote on that?
Oh yeah, no, you're right. Okay, never mind, we, we, we did not vote on it. Okay, so the motion, the motion under consideration is to hold a site, uh, to hold a public hearing on August sixth. Any, any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. We will see you on August sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Marty, good to see you here in Hafiki. Uh, great to see you here in Hafiki. Thank you, absolutely.
Bye, Ben.
Have a good evening, guys, good luck. Tom, it's been a picky three days. The, the next item.
AI on your computer? You can just talk in a little.
No, no, cause I talk in French. Okay, so the next item on the agenda uh, is to schedule a meeting for an appeal application that we got from staff review. We cannot discuss it. The applicants are not here. We are simply going to de- deem the appeal complete and schedule the meeting. I want to hold the meeting on the twenty-third, so that it's completely separate from everything, from anything else, so that we don't run into.
That the food court?
The food court issue. Correct.
So there is a, a meeting in between the sixteenth and the sixth?
The sixth, yes. It's the week after the sixteenth, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting.
And it's only to cover this matter?
Only to cover thi- this appeal. You all have your packets?
Yeah.
We, we cannot discuss anything because the applicant is not here. All we're going to do is, is deem the, deem that the application, the appeals application complete and schedule a pub, uh, schedule a hearing.
So then, do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
I move that we deem the appeal application complete.
Is there a second?
I don't know what makes an appeal.
There is a checklist.
Yes.
And it appears that a copy of the title, copy of the staff review committee decision, an application fee, plans, photographs, hopefully these are options. Plans are optional, photographs are optional, other written documentation.
The only thing that's not optional is the appeal.
Don't you get tapped, but we got.
Go to the backside of this. Per page.
I need it, I need a second on the motion.
Second, somebody's second?
Um, well, let's make sure we got.
I just want to make sure everything.
We got copies, we need in the very back. The meeting minutes. Over the way for a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion made by Susan Roth, seconded by Jamie Lowry to consider the appeal application complete. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty.
Just for the record, um, the, one of the owners of the food court, he was in.
We cannot discuss anything without the applicant being here.
I'm just trying to point out something from the inside, not through him.
We, we cannot discuss anything. Anything. This is by the town attorney. We cannot discuss anything about this, this appeal until we are in a public hearing.
Whatever. I'm not saying you're discussing, I'm just saying the applicant saw me in my premise. I wanted to be known, that's what I'm trying to get at, and it's why I'm not discussing anything.
Okay, so that, that would not create a conflict of interest? Any question, Jim?
You, you look.
No, I think, I mean, I no, no comment.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now we need to, uh, a motion to schedule the hearing on the twenty-third.
Second?
Motion made by Jamie Lowry, seconded by Susan Roth to hold a hearing on the, on the appeal on July twenty-third.
So, we, with just matter of discussion before, I, I just need some background on this, who, I don't know if, if I'm twenty plus years on this board of.
This is the first time there has ever been an appeal from a staff review committee.
But the staff review committee is a relatively new.
They were actually around, we codified them in, in the ordinance.
Oh, that's. So the, the, I, I'm not familiar with the process, if, if they get denied.
We're working.
We are the appeal board?
We are the appeal board. They can go from us to Superior Court. But we are the appeal board for this issue.
And do we treat it on just based on?
We look at the appeal.
Decision, or, or?
No.
We just.
We look at the appeal, which cites a specific issue in the findings of fact that they are appealing. That's what we look at, that specific issue. So. But that's, let's, let's hold it all off to the, to the time we have.
I have no questions on there, I, it's the process. My question is on the process. Like Tom, I'm not familiar with it. Is there anything in our book that I can go look up that explains that process to?
There is not.
Then is there a briefing that can be given to us by the lawyer or whoever that says, this is how it works, and this is what you do?
I can ask Leah, Leah will be here on that night.
She gonna be here?
And she is going to be here.
Then before the hearing, we should probably get a briefing, so we know exactly what our responsibility is.
We can get, I will call her and let her.
Otherwise, that'd be tempting to look at the, its own merits, not but, there's so many ways you could do this.
But I can, I can call her and let her know that we will let her to come in front of us and explain the process, and when she gets here, we will, we will start the meeting and we will go into executive session.
Well, that's what we did with clear play mistakes, so we'll just.
Yes, it'll be a, a.
Ten deals with the whole site plan and conditional review process.
It does.
Is, is there nothing in there that delineates the staff review?
Okay. No.
All right.
The only thing I will tell you is that Leah said to me that this is what is considered to be a de novo review and not an appellate review. An appellate review, we would be looking at the entire aspect of the plan. A de novo appeal is specific to the reason that they appealed.
Well, that, that begs the question, what was the reason? So.
We're going to have.
That's all in, it's, it's all.
It, it is in the package, and we are going to have someone from Public Works here, Terry's going to be here, cause he was on the committee. So, let's vote on whether or not we're going to meet on the twenty-third. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I, you hear what Jay?
The twenty-third.
Now, resume meeting?
No, there's no meeting scheduled that night. It is a Tuesday night, but there's no meeting scheduled.
I, I'll be out of town the twenty, of, of July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh shit, could it be the thirtieth? It's, the date's already set?
We're voting on the day.
Right on, right on.
Oh, well.
So, so, why?
We need, we need.
What's the logic of not doing it on the sixteenth?
The logic, uh, not enough time to get everything posted, to get everything dealt with, and the anticipation of it being a rather lo- lengthy discussion.
Are anybody else going to be around?
Oh, yeah.
I'm available.
I'll be.
I'm, I'll be here.
I mean.
I'll be here.
Yeah.
Outside people, outside.
Yes. Yes, this is.
Me neither.
This, this is, all of the abuddies are being notified, all, it's, it's being posted out on the town website that this is occurring. There will be other people in this meeting.
Is it going to be on Zoom?
No, it is not. It will be recorded, but it will not be on Zoom. The meetings that we take now are not on Zoom, they're just recorded and stored on the town website.
So, and, and Rich, not that this has anything to do with the data, but looking at ten point six in the ordinance, that does seem to, to deal, ten point six point two deals with the administrative site plan review process, which seems to be this.
It simply says that we do that, though. It doesn't give us
guidelines.
Ten point six point two, which is what I discussed with Leo. Cause I, I needed to make sure that I understood what it was, was telling us.
Yeah, it doesn't, it just, it references the planning board notification. Your desire shall be communicated.
It didn't say anything about appeal to.
So if you read the addendum of May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, I think you will find the reason, Rich and I briefly.
It, it is, the, it is in.
It's in this, it's in this addendum.
That's what they're saying, but we actually have the NOD in the packet.
Okay.
And, and that gives us the information, the notice of decision. That gives us the information as to why the staff review said no.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well.
Do we have another vote? No.
No, we, we voted. We're on the, on for the twenty-third.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't vote yet.
I don't remember, I don't remember.
We didn't vote?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
That's why I said.
I thought, I thought we had.
The vote.
Okay.
Tom was indicating that he wasn't here on the.
I wasn't here, yeah, I was going to vote no, cause I, I, I was looking forward to being there, and, and you.
Okay, so the motion is to have a meeting on the twenty-third of July here in this building.
Is there any, in order to have the, the number of people, at least that we're aware of, that could be here on the thirtieth versus the twenty-third, is there any downside of doing it on the thirtieth?
I'm all right if.
No. We can.
It's, it's a new experience.
It's the most exciting thing. When the world goes.
We, we can do it.
If I, if.
Excitement in my life.
If the, if the.
But it's ruled in your cases.
If the thirtieth. Hang on. If the thirty.
You have control.
I, I've lost control. If the thirtieth is going to work out better, we can do it on the thirtieth, it's, we, we simply have to notify the applicant. We are under time constraints that we are faced with.
So how many people do we need? I can make it, you can make it.
So it sounds like.
Jamie, can you make it?
I can.
On the twenty-third?
Either day.
Okay, I can make it, you can make it, Marty?
I guess so.
There you go.
Okay, then we'll go with.
Zach is a question mark, but we don't need him, but he's the secretary, so we need him.
We'll go with the twenty-third. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll, I'll.
I'm opposed. I think we should, I think we should try and validate that.
Yeah. You got my back.
You can watch the video.
Yeah, well, that's even more.
There we said the two.
So you said one or a time constraint? Does the thirty?
Let me.
You only have so many days to. You only have so many days to, uh.
I, I understand, but does the thirtieth meet that time?
Quad, so.
I'm fine waiting for Tom, I'm available on the thirtieth too, sadly.
Hang on, I gotta find.
If anything else going on, keep right now.
Out there in the past.
Site plan, too late. Too late. We all want something.
Mel, sorry. I realized that as soon as I said it.
We're all learning things tonight.
Well.
I thought you said it was.
So, so, uh, another question, well.
I just want to check it to make sure.
While you're looking that up, I have a question.
Yeah.
But the most. Jamal also required?
That's all right.
Jamal.
Jamal, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm gonna mess this up again, just so you know.
It's okay, I, I, I don't think I'm required, um, but I, I would like to attend, um, just for the, for the process. I think the attorney will really help out a lot.
We do have, we do have the time, if you look on page one seventy-nine, at ten point, ten point three. B, which says, within thirty days of submission of a completed appeal application and the payment of all fees, the planning board shall accept. The appeal for consideration, which we did, we deemed it complete and we had scheduled. And the thirty days is just about up. Uh, within forty-five days of accepting the application, which was today, so we have forty-five days from now. In which to render a decision.